All right. We are ready to start our meeting this evening. The Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, July 14th, 2015. And we will start with roll call.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Yes.
Tom Knoll?
Yes.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Arlene Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seeboth-Wilson?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
And Barbara Doss?
Yes.
First item this evening is consideration of consent calendar. Following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion in action. First item is the June 23rd, 2015 regular meeting minutes. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for June. D is appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, but there are some positions available on Board of Appeals and also on the Commission on Aging. So if you are interested, please go to the city website and you can get information about those boards and commissions and apply. Licenses, we have a temporary Class B license to serve wine at Kathy's Garden Party, the Hometown Festival, which is July 24th from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And also in the packet is a listing of one-year and two-year operators licenses. Also a permit for a street closing for Division Street on the 15th of July from 5:30 to midnight. G is election cost sharing agreement with Grant County. That's something we do every year. And Resolution 1517, an application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. And again, that's something that we do every year. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the topic, we would ask that you do fill out one of these green sheets. They are available on the table as you enter. But the first thing for public comments this evening will be our pleasure as a council to introduce our city manager, Karen Kurt, and I'm going to ask her to make a few comments.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you for the opportunity to be able to serve the residents of Platteville. As you can imagine, I am busy getting acclimated both professionally and personally. It's a big, big change, but it's been really fun so far. People have been extremely welcoming and I've had a chance to visit the fireworks, go to Heritage Days, the airport pancake breakfast. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to be able to participate in those community events. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what I'm going to be doing here in my first few weeks, just to get my feet on the ground. I'm starting out by meeting with all of our departments and department heads, just to get an overview of the city operations. I've also, as you know, scheduled individual meetings with each of you. Then I'll be reaching out and I have already had some meetings with some of our community stakeholders and kind of critical partners, our economic development agencies that we work with, Wisconsin League of Cities, WEDA, you know, there's a whole host of partners out there. And then it's my hope, starting maybe next month, going into September then, to visit all of the city's boards and commissions. So there is a plan. I won't get to everything the first couple of weeks here, but there is a methodical process in place. And I also just wanted to let you know that I am trying to come up to speed quickly in terms of the library block project. And that's a complex project. There's still a lot of moving parts. The developer will be in town next week, so hopefully we'll have more information that we'll be able to share here shortly. And then just a couple of informational items. One is that the CompuNet, the city's IT providers, in the process of setting up email accounts for each of the council members, which as it's been explained to me, given my limited knowledge at this point of Wisconsin's open data laws, that this is highly advantageous, as it would have been actually in Minnesota as well. This is an opportunity for you to be able to keep your city email separate from your personal email accounts. I know that with any type of technological change like that, some of the difficulty is just kind of in the implementation and getting those accounts set up. So we are planning on having CompuNet here at the next council meeting beforehand. So if you want to bring in your personal devices, they can help you get it set up on the spot. Otherwise, we can arrange a time to assist you with that. And then the last item I wanted to mention was work sessions. I can kind of see that we're going to need some work sessions to set our priorities for the upcoming year and as we start to work on the budget. And it's my understanding that you've traditionally done those at the end of your council meeting. And so a question I had for you is, are you open to considering potentially doing it before the council meeting, meaning a five -- I see some heads shaking already -- meaning potentially a 5:30 or 6 o'clock start? So I just wanted to put that out there. If you've got an immediate reaction, I can take that now. Otherwise, I can certainly follow up at the next council meeting to sort of get your thoughts as well.
One problem with work sessions, they vary in the length of time. And when you come in at 5:30 before a council meeting to 7:00, you might not even get close to how long it might take to get something done. That's why we have them at the end of the council, because we're here late at night sometimes.
On the other hand, it might be an advantage to know you only have it on and have a tighter agenda.
Some of the work schedules don't allow you to do that.
I'll give you a few thoughts to just think about, having come from communities where they did do it before. It is true that if you've got a finite period of time, you can try and structure or gatekeep so that you're potentially getting those topics racked up or you move it on to the next work session potentially. Another potential advantage is that then if you want to invite partners to come into that work session, maybe you want to do a joint work session with your area legislators or you can have a specific start time for them, the partners, to be able to come in. So those would be a couple of things to consider, but I'm certainly open to doing them at the end as well. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Something for us all to think about.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. The other person that has asked to speak is Arlene about the Stone Cottage.
Good evening. Arlene Sis, 130 North Hickory Street, representing the Stone Cottage. We have our wonderful ice cream social taking place on Sunday. Even though it's supposed to be hot, it will not be hot at the Stone Cottage. We have so many trees that it keeps it very cool and nice. And then when you're having your ice cream, it'll even be better. At our last event, we had a little bit of rain, but it didn't stop people from coming. We had actually a very good turnout. It was a wonderful day. We have lots of things that we are going to be doing. Farmer's market, and we're going to have our bunny cotton tail because we didn't really get to do much with bunny when it was sprinkling. And one of the things that we have been trying to promote is to have students 19 and under to come and sell their items because we think that this is our future. And it is amazing what some of these young people do, and it has been absolutely fantastic. And I think things are happening all the time at the Stone Cottage. We've got two other events that we'll be talking about later on. And if anybody has anything that they would like to let us know about, you can call me. And my phone number is on our various things that we have put around this city. And I think everybody always has a good time. And as we say, it's for children of all ages. Any questions?
What time?
It starts at, not at noon, about an hour later than that, we set up and do everything. And also the other thing is we have a lot of wonderful volunteers who help make this happen. If it weren't for volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do this, and they all work hard. I will pass this down, and I've got some over there.
Thank you. Any questions?
I can go on a lot longer. No.
Thank you. Next item is reports in the packet. Committee reports. Water and Sewer Commission, Stackhausen, Killian, and Knoll?
Nothing to add.
No addition.
Museum Board, Stackhausen?
Not to add, nothing to add.
Land Commission, Den?
Nothing to add.
And Historic Preservation, Nichols? We have changed the meeting date to the first and third Tuesday of the month, but it will be meeting as needed. So it isn't that it will always be the first and third Tuesday, but we're trying that to, a couple of reasons. It was easier for some of the folks who are on the commission right now, those dates. And sometimes we bumped up against the council meetings, so that's why the change. Other reports in your packet are the City Attorney itemized report, the Water and Sewer Financial Report, Airport Financial Report, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those?
Could I add an item that I didn't put in my report? I just want to let everybody know that we did receive notice from the Wisconsin Ecno Development Corporation that we received the site assessment grant for the environmental work on the former Pioneer Ford property. So we were approved up to $150,000, which is what we were anticipating. So the consultant has begun doing their work on that. We do have to get a formal contract from them, but anything after the award date is covered as part of that. That's the first one. The block grant, the application that was submitted, we should be receiving word whether we get that or not early August.
Thanks, that's wonderful.
That is good news. Thank you. First item is the MPO Trails Bid Award.
Yes. Thank you. As we discussed last time, we opened bids from five bidders for the Moving Platteville Outdoors paving and lighting installation. Bid tabulation and Delta III's recommendation are enclosed. The low bidder is Rule Construction from Dodgeville. They have done a number of projects for the city and have done an excellent job. And the base contract allows the construction to begin after award and be complete by August 15th of next year. There was an alternate bid to move the timetable up to November 15th. They said that it would cost an additional $20,000 for the acceleration. We're recommending not to include that. With state and federal grants and the fundraising to date, we have enough money to do this contract. But one of the things that you need to be aware of is that the base bid only calls for 26 lights to limit the budget. If there are funds remaining or if the MPO Coalition is able to do additional fundraising, we may be able to do additional lighting. We have Gene Weber here in the audience, in case you have any specific questions for the MPO or if he intends to ask or intends to be up and talk to you. He expressed his gratitude last time for all the work and hard work from the council and the community. There may be some additional information that he wants to do. But at this point, staff recommends award of Contract 14-14 for the Moving Platteville Outdoors paving and lighting installation to Rule Construction for the contract price of $988,227.30, subject to DNR approval.
Any questions from anyone?
I have a question in the third paragraph, the last sentence. What does that mean? Some of the cost of the project will be donated to give us some additional questions for
We have some of the people who are either contractors, consultants, or subcontractors who have said that they would donate a certain portion of their products or services. If you have specific questions, Gene can answer those in more detail. What I'm saying is, in order to bid fairly, what they had to do is they had to bid the full sum of, the full price of the contract as if there were no other issues so that Contractor A and Contractor B's price would be equally weighted. And so if we selected Contractor B because they have the low price overall, and then after the award, they say, because we like this project, because we're good citizens, we want to donate X amount of our contract back, that's the legal way to do it so that we don't run afoul of other things. So that's what's happening. And what we're saying is that you take the full price, but then if you back off what's being donated, that will be added to our contingency initially. And then, as I said earlier, if we get towards the end of the project and we have additional monies, we hope to use that to do additional lighting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I still do. Will there be an issue after the fact if we have opportunities for donated projects or product and time? Will we have a problem after the fact?
The city attorney could probably answer that.
No.
No, you can't answer or no, there's no problem.
I'm thinking that the problem was upfront in saying that you would award a project to a contractor or a sub because they were willing to donate a portion of their work. And so we avoided that by saying, simply bid. And then if during the course of executing this project, after it's been awarded and you are the contractor or you are a sub of the contractor, you want to donate your work and not receive 100% compensation based on what you're entitled to for the contract, that's fine. I'm assuming that we can find a way to usefully spend that money.
Oh, yes.
For additional improvements, which is what you've indicated.
Yes, that's exactly right.
I just didn't want to get in conflict later on.
Nor would I. So I'm thinking this is okay.
Okay, thank you.
We have run this through our attorney and we've run this through the DNR, and that's because they're putting in half of the money. We wanted to make sure that we're doing things open and above board. And they said, as long as we do it after the fact, as Brian has explained, they will allow that as match, as if a person wrote out a check for that amount of money.
Okay. Any other questions?
I make a motion, we award Contract 14-14 to Rule Construction for the total contract price of $988,227.30, subject to DNR approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Nichols? Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you again for all the hard work on the part of MPO and PCA and city staff because I know that they've worked on this as well. All right. Next item is information and discussion. Contract 1015, street repairs and maintenance. Howard?
Yes. Annually, we do a large street repair and maintenance contract, usually for a three-quarter inch overlay, as we've done in the past. We opened the one bid from Iverson Construction with the bid tab in close. Last year, we did roughly $34,000 square yards at $3.80 a square yard. And this year, we're doing over 54,000 square yards or recommending 54,000 square yards. And the price per square yard is $3.73 a square yard, a little bit lower. I imagine that that's partially due to oil prices and partially due to the amount of work that we're doing. We've solicited for a certain number of streets. And so what we'll be doing is we'll be using the remainder of the funding in the fall for striping, crack filling, and other spot repairs. I've been reminded that for crack filling, now that we have 40-hour work week, what we're going to do is we're going to use some of this funding to acquire materials and then do the work in-house in the fall. So that'll be part of the money that we'll spend that's remaining out of this pot of money.
One question for you, Howard. With the amount of money that were under budget, yeah, under budget on the fourth street project, I know some of it was necessary to be utilized for another portion of things, but do we still have money there that could also be used for streets since it was originally budgeted for street, don't we? So we could do a little bit more work?
I'm trying to be as prudent as I can. What we're talking about here is a little bit over $200,000 out of the $250,000. And we still have paint striping and crack filling material and other things that are coming up. I'm pretty sure that we will use all 250 plus some of that balances from the street construction, as you alluded to.
Okay, just through what we have scheduled to do now, then? We don't have a little extra to add in, then? As far as a couple more streets or anything with that other money?
I have not considered any at this time. I think this will be plenty. I think they'll have a very hard time making sure that they get all this stuff done because this is a lot of work for them to get done.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that contract proposal?
Howard, you mentioned paint striping. As I recall, we hired a firm to do the major striping.
Yeah.
Twenty, $25,000, something like that.
Yes.
You're just talking about the small portions.
Okay. I need to separate things out. What I'm talking about is the difference between the $203,000 for this contract and the $250,000 that's in the budget for street maintenance. Part of that difference will go to hiring a company to come in and do the long haul striping on the major streets. Our workers, our employees, will do the normal things like painting yellow curbs and doing parking stall striping and small things like that. We don't want our guys out there on the middle of Business 151 going three miles worth of striping down the middle of that road with 40 mile an hour cars going back and forth and them sitting on the back of a small little wagon, if you will, that does the spray painting. That spray painting is best for the smaller areas.
Also, Howard, don't we use a different kind of paint when we do the long haul striping? And we don't really have that. We have paint for the other types of striping that we do where this way the equipment people have the right equipment to handle that type of paint.
That's true as well. It's an epoxy-based paint. We do not have the capability of applying the epoxy-based paint. The epoxy-based paint is a longer-lasting material, so we don't have to do it as often.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Next item is the loan and development agreement for 1245 North Fourth. Joe?
Okay, yeah, this is a project that we had previously talked about. It's a former radio station property on North Fourth Street. This is a draft of the loan and development agreement that would allow the city to provide the assistance that we had talked about. It'd be a $265,000 loan for that development and also a $100,000 grant. We had kind of talked about some of the details. And the main item, I think, that we need to have some consensus on is the collateral for that project. Typically, our development agreement would have a mortgage on the property. The developer had indicated that would cause some issues with the tax credit and the financing that they have arranged. So they had requested that it be the personal guarantee. We had threw out an idea for an option as a mortgage on a different property that they had owned. So we had prepared a draft agreement that provided that alternative option in case that was something you wanted to consider. Obviously, the developer would prefer not to do that. They had indicated if you do want to have that, they've got to take another look at this agreement and send it to some other folks for consideration and potential revisions that they would need to have in there. Otherwise, it's pretty minor suggested changes that they would have that really are not any consequence. So I think tonight we need to get some consensus from the council if you feel there's a need for additional collateral as far as a mortgage on another property. The other item that I kind of had highlighted in there, underlined, was a deadline as far as substantial completion. I put in December 1st, 2016. The developer was okay with that. If you want to have something else in mind, we would need to know that as well. Otherwise, those are the two items that I guess we are looking for some direction on. If the council has any other suggested changes, we would need to know that as well.
My question, this parcel B on our Exhibit A, is that adjacent to the parcel A property?
Yes, the former radio station property is two parcels.
So your question is whether we're going to list that as collateral?
Correct.
Part of the total lot?
Correct.
That's your question?
Yes.
Otherwise, we may not.
Correct.
In reviewing the staff note, I'm comfortable with the $265,000 loan being secured with personal guarantees.
I second that.
We're not voting.
It's not a motion, I know that. I'm just giving you my opinion.
So that is the question, is as a council, are we satisfied with the personal guarantee versus the mortgage on parcel B? I would echo the other feeling that the personal guarantee, we had our attorney investigate whether or not that would be sufficient. Brian, you?
I came back with the recommendation or the opinion that the personal guarantee was a significant and sufficient guarantee of payment of this debt by the corporation.
Can I ask a question? Maybe I'm not just completely understanding it, but like a personal guarantee, so like worst-case scenario would be that they've given a personal guarantee to two to three other lenders at the same time. Would we know that? I don't think it will happen, but what protection do we have against something like that?
I mean, there's limitations on, I mean, I look, you're right. I mean, there are limitations in the things that I saw in the conclusions that a person can reasonably draw from those that could be changed by additional information.
Okay.
Now, having said that, let me just go back to my notes for a second. And I'm just trying to make sure that I say exactly. Only one, I looked into that very question, and that's why I was looking back at my notes to see what I found. Two of them didn't have, my notes are, as far as outstanding personal guarantees, not much if any.
Okay.
And the other shareholder guarantors contingent liabilities were significant, but were related to a project where the project's well underway. I saw photographs of it. It looked like they were finishing up. And once that project's done, then the permanent financing comes in and the contingent liability that would be that personal guarantee will be paid off when that permanent financing comes in.
Okay.
So I'm looking at that. And then the contingent liability that's shown in relation to that person's net worth was still, I mean, it wasn't trivial, but it wasn't. was still, I mean, it wasn't trivial, but it wasn't, it wasn't half of that person's net worth. It wasn't a quarter of it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So it didn't seem to me like it made a whole lot of difference.
And then, like, so if, while we are sitting on this loan with this personal guarantee, if they take on other personal guarantees after us, we legally would have the first, I know that this is just extreme scenario here.
There aren't, there's no rank orders in personal guarantees.
Okay, okay.
It's not like, in some things, it's first to file, you're first in line, that kind of thing. First in time, first in right.
Okay.
That, that rule does not apply to personal guarantees. It would be more in the nature of first to have judgment entered.
Okay.
Would be how you'd get to the head of that line.
That's interesting, okay. Thanks, Brian.
Okay.
That was helpful.
So Joe would like to have some kind of consensus from the council so that he can go forward with the developer's agreement. Ken?
I'm willing to go along with the personal guarantee.
I do.
Same here.
I'm me as well.
Okay. Here's your answer, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, Joe, or?
No, so we will have a revised agreement and whatever documents that we need to be updated for the next agenda.
Next item is a conditional use permit for 1575 Edgewood Court.
This is a request that was submitted for an intensive home occupation at that address. The resident there would like to operate a massage therapy business at that location. She would be the only employee of that business. It's all scheduled beforehand, Monday through Saturday, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's no physical changes proposed to the property. It's just, you know, one room of the house that would be used. Parking's available in the driveway, no other employees. We've done actually quite a few of these over the years since I've been here, and I've never encountered any issues with any of those similar businesses. So I would recommend approval. The planning commission considered this at their July meeting and also recommended approval. Any questions?
Seeing none, we will go on to the last item, which is a redevelopment loan extension for 85 East Main Street.
Yeah, this is a request, the Bailey Building where the, the change of seasons business is located, and there's apartments on the second floor. They currently have a loan with the city and the RDA that they obtained originally back in 2007 to help with the revitalization, remodeling of that building. They had, initially, it was due, it was a five-year loan back in 2012 that was due a balloon payment. They requested an extension at that time to obtain more funding to finish off an apartment and to obtain more equity in the property, hoping to obtain conventional financing. So it's due this year in August. They're at the point now where they say they still do not have adequate equity in that property to obtain conventional financing. They've got a current loan with us of just over $260,000. There's a secondary loan of about $29,000. So the total debt to the city is $290,000 plus. So what they're requesting is a two-year extension to that loan agreement. Hopefully, their, their hope is that in that two-year period of time, they will get the equity in a position that they can obtain conventional financing, that they would pay off our balloon payment at that time, and we would be out of the banking business as far as this property is concerned. There is other debt on the property. We would actually have a second and a fifth mortgage on the property. There's a private investor that has the first mortgage and a fourth mortgage. I do not know what the amounts of those are at this time. So that's their request. We have our loan with Livingston State Bank at 1.75%. They have indicated they would be interested in extending that loan or providing another loan for two years. The rate would likely be a little higher, somewhere between 1.75 and 2% is what he had anticipated, so that at least they would be willing to continue. The RDA will be considering this at their July 27th meeting, so they will have a recommendation hopefully for you before you consider this at your meeting. So I guess one thing, I, I've had some council members that have contacted me already with additional information that they would like to have for the next meeting. So I guess that's one thing for tonight, or between now and the next meeting. I would like to know what additional information you would need from the property owner before you make a decision. So you can either let me know now, or afterwards, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Are we allowed to have the information of what the first and fourth mortgage is? So we know what we're sharing to, for the total expenses of that place? I don't know if that, we can legally do that or not, I'm just asking.
I can certainly ask.
Okay.
Actually, I did ask.
Be interesting to know, maybe he can give them an extension, and we don't have to do it again.
Well, we should be able to just through, find information on who has the first and, and fourth mortgage by just looking at public records. That shouldn't be the problem, would, would be how much.
Would that show the amount?
It will not show the amount that is presently owned, owed, but will show the amount of what the mortgage was, the initial. Yes, if there's a lien against it, yes. But there are a number of questions, I think all of us have. And so I talked to Joe, so I voiced my questions, and I hope everybody else does too.
Anybody else have any comments or questions tonight?
Well, since questions have come up, are you going to give us those questions and answers before the council meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
So the rest of us will know?
Yes.
What's been asked.
Well, at, at a minimum, depending on when I get the response back from them, I, I would like to have it in the packet for the, the next meeting.
Do we have other individuals that are in similar situation? That are asking to have their loans reviewed?
Not currently. I mean, we, we've got other loans that we've made, but none that have come in for extension requests.
Have we given these extensions before, following that line?
Well, on this property, we, we did. 2012, there was extension. I don't know if anybody else.
There was a three-year extension in 2012 to 15.
Right, right, right. Any other properties besides this?
I don't remember the old, where Applied Micro is, if that previous owner, I think.
There was an extension on a loan.
I think there was an extension for that, that property.
Right.
And when you say on the loan, you mean through the RDA?
Correct.
Well, the pastor loan.
It was, it was a similar situation. It was a, a large enough project that the city also got involved on the, on the loan.
What about where the Journal is located, that building? Is that part of this type of?
Well, that loan was just, just provided, so.
Right.
They've got a period of time before that loan is due.
We're talking about the old Brehden, is that what, Sheet Metal Building? On Fourth?
Yeah, where Applied Micro is now located, correct. And that, that has now been paid off, so that, that has been taken care of.
Okay, well, if you have questions, please get them to Joe as soon as possible so he has time to try to get the answers before our next council meeting. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Don't we?
We have a second. All right, we'll vote. Who seconded? Barb?
No, yes, I agree.
You agree? We're voting to adjourn.
Stackhausen?
Yes, taking this a while.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
He was going to vote no.
Yes.